To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next agenda, our election of the vice chair person for 2020, voted on by the school committee.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Peter Stevens.
Motion made and seconded to nominate Peter Stevens. Any discussion? Any further nominations?
Motion that nominations be closed.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close nominations, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Nominations are closed. Congratulations, Mr. Stevens. Thank you for another year.
We have to vote.
Oh, we have to vote? We have to vote? Well, okay. I think it's kind of a given. These darn formalities. All right, Mr. Stevens, vice chair. Motion to accept Mr. Stevens as vice chair for the upcoming school year 2021.
Aye.
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 Thank you. That is unanimous. Again, congratulations.
Thank you.
School committee members, if you have before you, Pittsburgh School Committee Subcommittee's Resource Subcommittee, Pete Stevens Chair, Jim Walsh, Aiden Horgan. School Building Needs, Pete Stevens Chair, Jeanne LaBelle Pierce, Sally Craigin. Policy Subcommittee, Aiden Horgan Chair, Jim Walsh and Rosemary Reynolds. Student Support Subcommittee, Jeanne LaBelle Pierce Chair, Sally Craigin, Jim Walsh. Personnel Subcommittee, Mayor Steve DiNatale Chair, Pete Stevens and Jim Walsh. Okay. You want to go through the reports? Any... Resource Subcommittee, Mr. Stevens.
Resource Subcommittee, I don't have my notes with me tonight, but we did meet Thursday afternoon. It was a very short meeting, very little to update. We did discuss a little bit about the new money that was coming, but a plan has to be laid out for it, which we will have to wait on. We discussed the enrollment and where we are going to be spending money from the city on the building needs.
Mr. Walsh, any?
I just mentioned, Eva Kelly mentioned that as of October 1st, enrollment was up by 18 students compared to last year on October 1st. And she also said we have seven students from Puerto Rico as a result of the earthquake that happened last month. And a couple of the items that we voted on at the Resource Subcommittee are on the action items today to be voted on by the entire school committee.
Nothing on school building needs tonight. Okay. Policy Committee?
Nothing new to report.
Student Support Subcommittee?
We met on January 27th, just last Monday. We got a preview of the presentation you're going to see tonight from Superintendent Jokula. And in that preview covered really what's being done in terms of intervention and innovation in the schools, and you'll hear a little bit about that tonight. We did talk about student discipline issues and what's being done in some of the schools, particularly, we talked about Memorial here and some of the student discipline issues that have presented themselves there. We had heard a little bit about the NAVIANCE program at the high school for college and career planning, and we'll follow up more with that. And maybe, Kaden, as you present, that might be something that we can talk a little bit at some point about your experience with NAVIANCE. And then looked at some of the statistics that you'll see again tonight in the superintendent's report about postgraduate statistics and what we know about the success of our students as they leave our district. So it was an interesting meeting. I think you'll see a lot of the things that we touched on when you see the report tonight. I don't know, Aiden, if you have anything else.
No, I think that covers it.
Any questions? Thank you. Personnel Subcommittee, I have nothing to report. Prove the minutes for... Well, we've got the two new student reps, but one is here. Kaden, welcome aboard. And Michelle is not... Is she?
She's right there.
Yes, she is! What an entrance! Just in time! Hi! Okay. How do you pronounce your last name, Michelle?
Tome.
Tome?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like Mel, Tome.
Okay.
Sorry about your car.
It's fine.
Are you both juniors?
Yes.
Welcome. Approve the minutes from a previous school committee meeting of January 6, 2020.
Make motion? Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right.
No need for executive session, Mr. Superintendent?
Okay, I was just wondering if you have a minute, just have Kaden and Michelle just tell, introduce themselves to the Subcommittee, tell them a little bit about themselves.
Hi, my name is Kaden Spocklady. I'm a junior at Pittsburgh High School. I've been involved in the Pittsburgh Public School System since kindergarten. I started at South Street, and then I went to Memorial, now I'm at FHS. I'm in the Pittsburgh High Student Advisory Council, where I got this opportunity, but also I am the Pittsburgh representative for the Central Mass Regional Advisory Council, which meets every other month and just talks with a representative from each high school, like in the Central Mass region. So we meet tomorrow, so I won't be in school tomorrow, but I'll be there. I'm also the class treasurer of the class of 2021 at FHS for the second year in a row. And outside of school, I do community theater, and I'm in an acting intensive, and I'm working as a choreographer for a local youth musical. And I've worked with you before at Strattan.
Nice to see you.
You too.
So I'm Michelle, I'm also a junior at Pittsburgh High School. I became part of this because of the Student Advisory Council. So I've been in the Pittsburgh Public Schools since kindergarten as well. I started off at Crocker, then Memorial, and then I'm at Pittsburgh High School. I'm part of the mentor group now at Crocker Elementary School currently. I do community service outside of school, both part of NHS, and I do soccer, indoor track, and lacrosse.
Terrific. Thank you.
So, Mr. Maher.
Yes.
We should probably tell you guys, as well as remind our viewers, we are really, really glad you're here. So we will have the two of you for this semester and then fall semester, please ask questions. Please ask questions of speakers. If there's something that's not clear, education is filled with jargon, kind of like the medical field or the automotive field. There's a lot of, you know, words and terms that takes a while for those of us here who have been serving. So we welcome your participation, however you want to do it. But questions and hearing your perspective at the high school is super helpful for us. So thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us.
Okay.
Okay.
Communications? I don't believe...
Did we ask if the reps had anything to report?
Did you want to report anything tonight?
Yeah, we can, we have some stuff.
Okay.
We just received quarter-two report cards last Friday in advisory, where we also discussed in Student Advisory Council before school, the effectiveness of that period, so whether or not it's like, it's like being put to like its best, its best, like, full potential.
150 students are taking the Biology MCAS, which is like a requirement to graduate next week. And then we're, we always say we have to be present, positive, and prepared, but we need it especially next week to take the test.
And we had class meetings, every class met with Mr. Roach, where he like emphasized that for us and talked about the importance of attendance and all stuff like that. The FHS Multicultural Club is coordinating a drive to generate items and material for the citizens of Commonwealth of Puerto Rico to support those affected by the recent earthquakes. So they are actively searching for any donations.
All students involved in the Student Advisory Council attend our monthly meeting on Thursday mornings with Mr. Roach to talk about how we improve our schools. This week, we specifically talked about school IDs and a better way to use them and cleanliness in the bathrooms.
Good one. That's a good one.
Right now, we're dealing with Honors Academy placement tests for the class of 2024. So we're trying to like ease the transition into the high school halls and introduce ourselves to like provide familiar faces come September of 2020.
A youth venture meeting took place on Friday, January 30th, targeting sophomores of class of 2022 to be able to introduce a new venture that my friend Rachel O'Meara and I are working on. That's you.
So with the new youth venture that we're trying to launch, we're trying to like implement new ways to improve and build social skills like among FHS and coordinate events to introduce students to each other, strengthen student-student relationships and student-faculty relationships, which all was like kind of an idea branched off of an assembly that was brought to us by the Sandy Hook Promise, where their main slogan was "Just Start With A Smile." So we kind of branched off of that and went to Mr. Roach with that idea. So it's hopefully coming together soon. But other ventures that presented were the Current Events Club, a community service-based venture, Karate For Kids by Ethan Chandler, and Try Your Best Venture, and then the Peer Ambassador Program. So we got a few names from the sophomore class of people who wanted to get involved, and we're going to branch out to them, and hopefully we can get it on its feet. That's all we have.
Thank you. Okay, great. Thank you. Public comment?
Oops.
Okay.
Communications.
Yes.
So we're back to first and third Mondays for our school committee meetings, but I wanted to make sure that we acknowledged a really wonderful event that was two Saturdays ago, the Winter Wonderland Book Swap. And this was a breakfast at South Street. I just got to talk to Eva Kelly, and more than 200 folks came to that. And there were a wide variety of activities for kids to do, and literacy, and the library was there, and MOC, and a lot of our area partners. So lots of families and really, really good turnout for the community. So that's a hallmark and happens every year, so it's a great thing. I think that's it.
Okay. All right, communications, that was communications. Public comment? Anyone wishing to make a public comment? Five-minute limit. Seeing none? Superintendent's report.
Okay, great, thank you, Mr. Maher. First up, under Superintendent's report is the Project 351 Ambassador. Tonight, we have Estella LeBlanc from McKay Arts Academy here with Mary Kringen, who's the Chair of the Project 351 Educators Advisory Crew, and Becky Leva, who's the Assistant Principal over at McKay. And also Mark Pierce, Principal of McKay, is in the background. He's in the foreground and not.
Thank you for having us and willing to honor Estella, your ambassador, who will be representing the city of Pittsburgh for the next year through the nonprofit organization Project 351, where we take 351 eighth graders from across the Commonwealth for a year of leadership training and community service projects. So we kick off the launch on Martin Luther King Day weekend, and we were there that Saturday. Unfortunately, the weather didn't really cooperate, so we had to come home a little bit earlier. But Estella got to meet like-minded students, just like her, who like to do community service, who care about their community, care about others. She is described as a hard-working, dedicated, caring student who cares about her community. And I think you'd be proud of her to know that she cares about her community, and she quote, I quote her, "As you can only get to live every second in your life once, why not make it the best it can be and help each other? If I make a difference, maybe others will too." And she showed that Saturday at Faneuil Hall, and then I'm going to have her tell you what she did as her service project. Go ahead.
Well, normally, the students would be able to branch off all across Boston and do different projects at different places, but since we had to come early because of unforeseen weather, we got to stay inside Faneuil Hall and do two different service projects there, where one of them, we made the felt-knot blankets for, I think it was orphaned children.
The homeless children, yeah.
And the homeless children. And we also made Valentine's Day cards for veterans and veterans' families.
Correct. Correct. So Estella will do her year of service. Her next project is collecting clothing for Cradles to Crayons, and that'll be a six-week project that she will be coached with by myself and by somebody at the school. And after that, she will be invited to represent Governor Baker at the Memorial Day Exercises in Pittsburgh, if Pittsburgh so chooses to have her read his proclamation. So every ambassador, he will, he invited them, unfortunately, she didn't hear that invitation, back at JFK Library Saturday night, but she will be invited to read that proclamation. We will go to Gillette Stadium in June for reunion, where we'll get all the eighth graders back together again, and they'll share what they have done for their projects. The summer project is collecting donations for a 9/11 tribute. September 11th, we go to the Gross Kennedy Greenway and put together care packages for the homeless veterans and our active military service people across the United States and the whole world. Most of them, they cost $75 a box to mail across to the veterans, so we do some fundraising for that. And then in the fall, she does a food service, collects food for a local food bank, and then that ends her year of service. She can then apply to be on the regional unity crew as a freshman in high school, and she can stay with the program, so if she so chooses. And the Kraft Foundation awards a $20,000 scholarship to one of the ambassadors who stays with the program and commits to community service. So she was wonderful. She absorbed everything on Saturday. At one point, I turned around and she was taking pictures of all of the wonderful portraits in Faneuil Hall, and really rose to the occasion. And so I live in Pittsburgh, and I've been involved in Project 351 for the past eight years as a regional coach and co-chair of the Educators Advisory Group and Bus Chaperone and whatever else. We have a new initiative this year with the Boston Celtics Playbook Initiative, where we're helping coaching students on those difficult conversations to have around diversity and racism and bullying and how to stand up for each other. And so hopefully, Pittsburgh will be chosen one of these years if we have an ambassador that wants to continue. So the last three years, you've had wonderful ambassadors, but haven't made it on to the next level. So my money is on this superstar right here, and she's wonderful. Chad did a wonderful video of her and also newspaper article. And when you get front page of the Sentinel for good news, that's a gold star for Pittsburgh Public Schools. So thank you so much.
And she's very active at McKay, I just wanted to add that. She's, she is our Student Council President this year. She's been involved in Student Council all four years of middle school. She is also involved in youth venture. She's been doing that for several years now, and she's on the Student Advisory Council for the principal, so that's a new initiative this year, and she's joined that. So very, very, very busy young lady. Somewhere, she does her homework, too.
So maybe someday she'll be sitting over there. Right? That's what we hope. And getting involved in all the community service projects that the high school has to offer students. So keep your eye out. She'll be there next year. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
How's Sean doing?
Miss Kringen, I'm, uh, Miss Kringen was an area outstanding principal in the area. I'm glad to see you're enjoying your retirement.
I am, I am. I enjoy my retirement, enjoy working with kids in this kind of forum and not have to do the discipline or the other stuff, so. But it's fun. So thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Can we get a photograph of the mayor?
Yes, I would like the mayor and the superintendent, if you don't mind, for Project 351, the website. Thanks.
I'm impressed.
Michelle?
That's okay.
What background do you want?
Do you want to go background?
Because I remember.
Other background? Yep.
Mary, do you want to get in?
I will on the next one.
Okay.
Want to just get this one for us? Do I get to stand next to the mayor?
Let's go.
Same height? No.
I got a couple cameras here.
Okay.
And do we all sign it? Yes.
Thank you. Mom's taking one behind you.
I think I get one, right?
Yes, I think you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, buddy.
Congratulations. Yeah, that's right.
She was my principal in Princeton for like, yeah, eight years when I was there.
She's been a friend for years.
Yeah.
I tried to get a couple of Pittsburgh.
So, hit it. So the long and winding road of presenting my entry plan findings has finally arrived. Originally, I planned on presenting this at the end of last school year, but with all the work that was going on, the transitions that were taking place, in terms of getting new staff onboard, hiring new staff, closing out the year, it took a little bit more time than I anticipated. So what I'd sent out to you as part of the school committee packet was the hard copy findings. The mayor informed you that it was his light weekend reading, and I've tried to condense that into a presentation, which I gave a preview of to the Student Support Subcommittee last Monday. I've tweaked it a little bit, just to kind of base, based on the final editing that was done. Yeah, but before I go further, I just want to thank the team that helped me out, the cabinet team, but also Principal Roach is here, there's a section on Pittsburgh High who's extremely helpful on. Eva Kelly, Director of Enrollment, Becky Mackey, interim Director of ALL, and Chad Garner, Chad was our editor. We pulled him out of retirement from the Sentinel to do some real editing here. So it's probably his longest assignment to see if I pass my test, so to speak. So with that, just as some context and introduction, I'll get started, and I would just ask if you have any questions, just let me know, and I'll do my best to answer them. So the theme really for this entry plan is the findings that kind of came together for me was one of transitions. Number one, that's not only our leadership team that I was talking about earlier, but also the student population in Pittsburgh has been transitioning now for several years. And we're going to talk about that a little bit more as we go through it, but really providing our students access, equity, and opportunities. These are a few of the themes that are, come directly from Commissioner Riley. And as we looked at different things that we're doing now, how they fit into those lenses. So I'll be trying to talk about some of the subjects contained in this report through those lenses. So here we go. So the purpose last year back in October was really to kind of go out, meet with the schools, look, listen, and learn, look at data, and with the goal of, once this is all complete, putting together a strategic plan for the future. You know, one of, a few things I believe, and just trying to be, you know, brief, number one, all of our students can achieve at a high level. Over the last year, we've been looking at our students and, you know, how they perform relative to not only the state, but also some local abutting districts. And our students can perform better than the local abutting districts. And one of the goals that I set out initially a year ago was to be the best urban district in the state, and we're starting to make progress on that. And not only to start with the students being able to achieve at a high level, but the primacy of having the teacher-student relationship. Good teaching is key to improving student outcomes. So whether that's academic, social, emotional, or on extracurricular front, that's a key, and that'll be a focus area going forward. And lastly, the access opportunity and equity component of everything that we do. In some of those categories, we're further along than others. So just kind of a recap, what I did during this process, I met with a variety of leaders, whether it be school committee, city council, leadership team, union leadership, teachers, students, the statewide system of support, which is the state's kind of turnaround arm, and local nonprofit leaders to get their input of, you know, where they think we are and what we're about right now, and also what they'd like to see. And again, attending school committee meetings, city council, some special Massachusetts Associate School Superintendent conferences and DESI conferences. One was on with, about Latinx students in Worcester last fall, which several members of the team attended. And also the Mastured System of Support, which several of us also attended. That was probably the most widely-attended, I'll say, DESI seminar that I've attended in maybe 10 years. That was down at the Boxborough or Bedford Holiday Inn, and almost every school district in the state was at this conference.
Latinx?
Latinx, yes.
So Latina would be feminine, Latino would be male, so Latinx would be all-encompassing and inclusive.
Latino and Latina.
Right, right. So that's the new inclusive term for...
Nothing to do with Gen X?
No, nothing to do with Gen X. Well, depending on how you look at it, no.
Okay.
And the last component was really looking at our data, the formal, you know, MCAS test results, access test results, and also over the last year, with some of our schools being in the bottom 10%, we've had outside audits performed by the state, actually, third-party auditing firms. Public Consulting Group and AIR have either visited our schools or looked at our curriculum. Again, this is a little bit repetitive, and then really just getting down to more, some of the actions, looking at the documents, the student achievement data, which in the report is really an appendix, going into schools and classrooms, seeing what's actually happening in the classrooms, looking at, you know, our operational data, financial, and really over the last year, having the opportunity for either individually or collectively with Cabinet going out and meeting with each school's instructional leadership teams to hear where they're at and how they're approaching the challenge and opportunity of teaching our students. So just looking back over the last year and a little bit into next year, as I mentioned earlier, you know, originally, I planned to have this presentation at the end of last school year. It took a little longer. And kind of in parallel with that, we've been working on turnaround plans at each of the four schools in turnaround. We've started the implementation of those turnaround plans. If Principal Pierce wants to come to the foreground, he can talk about it, but I'm sure he's just fine sitting back there tonight. And then now, really, one of the things that is a real game changer for us in Pittsburgh, and we're one of 35 communities that will be benefiting from the Student Opportunity Act, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in the details. And kind of in parallel with that, although not necessarily a finding, is really that the, in terms of looking at our facilities, the Crocker Core Project Plan is still in process. So starting off with the findings was really the community engagement and communication. I think one of the things that we are doing, but probably need to do a little bit more of, is to be more accessible to the community. Over the last year, we've taken some steps to do that. The billboards in English and Spanish, the introductory videos by the new school leaders, but also the leaders who have been with us, welcoming students back to school. And we formed a collaborative partnership with a new group, or new to us, called the Public Education Stewards. enrolled in that class now. But lastly, you know, going back to communication, improving the two-way communication, we have a lot of communication that goes one way, but I guess maybe having more of a two-way flow and dialogue and relationship is something that I think Fitchburg and a lot of districts are trying to improve. So, just moving on, you know, one thing, I guess really where it all starts is enrollment for us. How many students are enrolled, and in the actual report, I get into a little bit more of the composition of our students. That's in the appendix. I think that might be the first charter table there. The enrollment has been on the increase gradually over the last several years. As of October 1 this year, the enrollment number was 18 above last year, and, you know, slowly steadily it keeps increasing, which is a good thing for us. Another thing that I looked at that is, was information from a report called the Students' Attending Report, which Eva Kelly and the Enrollment Office completes every year, and really it shows where every student who resides in Fitchburg, where they go to school, whether they go to school in Fitchburg or not. So, really, there is over 6,000, I think it's about 6,500 students total, and about three-quarters of those students consistently attend Fitchburg Public Schools, and I think the exact percent is 76%. The next largest group of students, 422, school choice out. The rate of that increase has slowed down. The next largest group is students attending Monty Tech. We have 357 students attending Monty Tech. Then we have 290 attending parochial schools. That trend has decreased there with the closure of St. Anthony's, and then the remainder are charter, and then homeschool, which showed some slight increases, and I think really the point of this, this slide is to show, number one, where are the, are students attending, but also the fact that we have to, you know, continue to offer high-quality education to make sure they continue to come to Fitchburg Public Schools. So, looking at our students some more, and when we talk about the Student Opportunity Act, one of the reasons that we're a beneficiary is, you know, we have a lot more high-needs students and economically disadvantaged are the monikers that the state uses, and we're around 70%. I think by the way the state defines the aid for next year, it's about 75% of our students are high-needs or ECODIS, and we'll talk about funding a little bit more later. You know, returning to the theme of transitions, back in 2010, 2011, our students, the trend really had, I think, an inflection point transition to where the Latino Hispanic community exceeded the white community, and really now, over the last 12 years, has gone from about 38% to currently 52% of our student population. The white population is down around 30% to 30%. The multirace has shown a little bit of an increase, and the African-American and Asian populations have remained relatively stable.
That's the entire system?
That's the entire system.
Because 52, Jeremy, 52 is what the high school is, more or less, Hispanic?
Pretty reflective.
Is that right, of the overall district? Yeah, okay. Yeah.
One area where we've put a lot of focus on over the last year is the chronic absenteeism effort, and really this information, I think I've shared with this committee and at least the, one of the students, either the student subcommittee and resource subcommittee, and student attendance is important for a couple of reasons. Number one, if they're not present, they're not able to learn, and from a state accountability perspective, improvements in reducing this number at the K through W school levels accounts for 10% of our score with DESI, and at the high school, student attendance only counts for 5%. So, it can help when our schools move up in terms of the state's accountability rating system.
So, there are still gaps between our subgroups.
Well.
I mean, that, that's where the, that's the challenge anyway, isn't it?
That is, that is, yes, that's one of the challenges, yes, with attendance, is to narrow the rates of absenteeism amongst the subgroups. And I think over the last year and a half, we are making progress. It's not easy, and, you know, it's a, it takes a concerted effort every day at all our schools. I'm looking over at Mr. Shalfo and Mr. Renda, but I'm sure Jeremy could confirm on that as well. You know, another challenge that we face is the student mobility or student churn, and what that means is the students who enroll with us and who leave us for whatever reason. And on average, our churn rate is about 20%. So, just kind of using some simple numbers, if we have 5,000 students who attend our schools, you know, during, as of October 1, let's say, over the course of the year, we'll have 6,000 students who actually enter our doors and leave our doors. So, you know, that's an area that, you know, there's things we can control and things we can't control, but again, also looking at the data and looking at the subgroups, the churn rate is a little bit higher with the ALL and students with disabilities subgroups as compared to other subgroups. And the average.
On this graph, I'm assuming some students could fall under the ALL group, it could also fall under the Latino group, could also fall under high needs, so it's, obviously this is just a percentage, so it's not a number of students, but it's not simple to say that Latino just includes, you could have a Latino student but has other issues.
It could be another subgroup as well.
Yes, yeah.
And I had just a quick note, I mean, one extremely trivial note, it's just going back to the Latino Latinx thing.
Yep.
Changed. But I also wanted to clarify, for, let's just say for 2019, for ALL students, it's at 27%, but this is churn, so it's inflow and outflow. So, did 27% of, you know, is that in or out, or is that?
It's both. Churn is both.
So, how do we know what students came in? Like, if there was, like you said, 5,000, but actually we had 8,000 students. So, was that 3,000 students that came and stayed, and then there was 3,000 students from that 5,000 that left? But I don't think that's what's happening. I think it's like, a lot of those students that come in each year, that come in each year, leave that same year. I would assume it's a majority, but that kind of statistic, I'd like to see if there's any way to expand on this data, because I think in each subgroup too, over the years, that could really, I feel like that would be really critical information to see, especially for ALL students. I mean, that, that subgroup is one of the least, I mean, this entire Commonwealth kind of lets them down, right? That group is one of the least served groups in the entire Commonwealth, Massachusetts. That's kind of a trend. So, I think that'd be really important for us to see, is this, is it mostly outflow or mostly inflow, and what kind of students from year to year?
I'm looking over to.
I can speak to what, the trends that we saw at Long Joe in one year. It was, two years ago, it was 150 students in and 150 students out for.
Wow.
It's usually plus or minus one or two as far as your net gain or loss, so.
Before those 150, right? It's like, how many of those that left were part of the 150 that came in that year? That's really what I'm trying to get at.
Are they the same students?
Right, and to what, you know, proportion?
You could also have a student who came in, left, and then came back as well.
Yes.
Yes.
Within one year, it's probably more over like a one or two-year, three-year period. They're moving often, so I, we could figure that out, but I would say we would probably see that kids who move, the ones who are moving a lot, keep moving. They move out, they move back in. Sometimes they come back in the same year. More often than not, though, they pop up a year later, two years later, and the same thing, they leave us after a year and a half, somewhere else come back.
And relative to MCAS, you've got stability equals success, and this is just the opposite of it, right?
Yeah, so, so you're chapter ahead of me here.
I told you I did my homework.
Yeah, okay, that's good, that's good.
Highlighted and tabbed, yeah.
So, again, you know, so looking, considering the data, the enrollment, and actually Eva and a couple other people looked at data, looked at this year's anticipated graduating senior class, and we looked back, going back to kindergarten, to see how many of them with us, have been with us since then, or a majority of times since then. We found that a little more than a third of those students have been with us continuously, let's say. So, of those students, you know, the MCAS scores are up here, a vast majority of them, you know, passed the math, ELA, and science MCAS scores. So, you know, it really shouldn't be a finding, but, you know, clearly stability equals success. And, you know, when you compare Fitchburg to other communities, they probably have less churn and turnover, so.
Yeah.
So, then again, here's just a little bit more information of, you know, the, some of the demographics of that senior cohort that we looked at in terms of the economically disadvantaged Latino, and as you asked, Jeremy, yeah, it's about 40% of that class, of the senior class Latino, so.
Is that 35% of students from kindergarten to graduation?
Yes.
Is that the, kind of a normal number for many districts, or do you have some that have like 50, 60% who stay all 12 years?
You know, in all honesty, I didn't look at other districts.
I just think that's, I think it's a very decent number, and a lot of times, because of jobs, parents leave, and there's a lot of legitimate reasons why a student.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, okay.
Absolutely, and I don't know.
I think it's reflective of an urban district.
Yes.
Not at all what a suburban district looks like.
Yeah.
For graduation.
I wouldn't know, I don't, number one, I don't know if, and I'm looking over at Adam Craig or John, if the state even has that, does that type of analysis.
The dark tool.
Dark tool, but, so, maybe we'll have an answer for you in a few minutes here, so. Moving on, you know, one of the areas that a lot of school districts are looking at, and the state is looking at, is the composition of the teacher base and looking at who the students are. So, when you look at our students, again, composition, 30% white, 52% Latino, 7% African-American, 12% other, which consists of Asian and multirace. And again, based on the last year's, it's EPIM submission, our teachers are 97% white, 2% African-American, and 1% other. You know, these numbers might be a little bit higher than the state average, but in many communities, in many urban ones, the white ratio is in the mid to upper 80s to low 90s as well. And, you know, it's, there's research that shows that students, diverse students do better when there are diverse teachers. So, one of the things that we're doing, actually, and this is, you know, early stage, but really looking into the future, is trying to have an early college program, teaching program that Jeremy mentioned at the presentation on early college. We also received a grant to provide some, you know, some training.
Yep.
For certification. Also, Commissioner Riley just recently announced that he's trying to make teacher certification a little bit easier in terms of passing the MTEL. There are a number of teachers and probably disproportionately diverse teachers who have a 60% pass rate of the MTEL versus, I think, the white pass. MTEL rate is maybe 87, 88%, somewhere around there, and there are a lot of good teachers.
Is that the answer?
Well, there are a lot of good teachers who can't pass.
Diluting the pool? I don't know.
Talk about the test being kind of culturally biased.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, yeah.
One of the problems.
Who makes the test?
I don't know who makes, if it's, or who, Pigeon Pearson who makes it?
I don't want to, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
And they, they don't stand up to that kind of scrutiny? That it's biased?
Well, I think the scrutiny is really just finally starting to focus on it.
That disturbed me when I read that. I just, I don't know, and I, to me, it's, you know, everybody gets a trophy, you know what I mean?
No, well, I don't know if I'd say that. Yeah, you know, there are a lot of good teachers who we've had to let go that couldn't pass the test, and because we receive, you know, millions of dollars in, you know, Title I funding, that was a crime, and they all had to be highly certified. So, I think this is an effort by the commissioner to try to allow districts to keep good teachers, whether or not they can pass MTEL.
Didn't he also suggest some other things that they could get credit for?
Yeah, the job, work experience.
I think he allowed another testing mechanism. I don't have the article quoted remembered by heart, but there was an all test that he was offering.
I think it's a competency review.
Yeah, competency.
At the student support meeting, I know, Mr. Roach, you were talking about the, like, looking in, and I thought that's something that you said the district is interested in, looking into our homegrown kind of talent, and if we did, were able to get another program where we could get, well, at least early childhood education, right? But not just that, I mean, I think you've got this great compact with Fitchburg State, and it's a teaching college. It seems like, I mean, it sounded like that was sort of a plan, right, that we have a couple of teachers at the high school who were graduates of Fitchburg High, who are, I mean, we have a lot of teachers who are graduates of Fitchburg High, right, but that, I guess, who are more diverse in their backgrounds, so, I don't know. It seems to me like that's a great pursuit.
Yeah, I think we mentioned, Holyoke Public Schools is now offering a program where if students study education, they guarantee them a job once they graduate from college. I think the guarantee isn't specific to teaching, but could be in a parallel, but just the assurance that they do have a job once they do graduate, and that's something, I guess, that we would, you know, or could be looking at as well. I should just add, although not necessarily, it's not in this report anywhere, and I just mentioned it to our staff this morning, Fitchburg State is starting a strategic planning process, and I'll be going there Wednesday morning, they're gathering feedback, so I don't know if that's just the start of how the process works, but revisiting the overall relationship with Fitchburg State, I think, is a priority for us, seeing as they are in our backyard and, you know, we do have a school on their campus. You know, and, you know, talking about transitions, they've gone through transitions as well. One of the people in their education department just left for another position in Georgia. So, I think it's important to try to keep the pipe, they need to keep the pipeline of students coming in, because I think the number of students attending Fitchburg State for education has decreased, and, you know, I think they're trying to, you know, work with the schools and, I think, with Fitchburg High to try to build a pathway and on-ramp for students.
You know, they're, they're getting a lot of publicity, and publicity isn't right, but I guess a lot of credibility for the criminal justice program that they've started, right, the five-year program, and police departments are actually recruiting through that. I mean, I've.
They've gone through transitions as well. One of the people in their education department just left for another position in Georgia. So I think it's important to try to keep the pipe, they need to keep the pipeline of students coming in, because I think the number of students attending Fitchburg State for education has decreased. And, you know, I think they're trying to, you know, work with the schools, and I think with Fitchburg High, to try to build a pathway and an on-ramp for students.
You know, they're getting a lot of publicity, and publicity isn't right, but I guess a lot of credibility for the criminal justice program that they've started, right? The five-year program, and police departments are actually recruiting through that. I mean, I have two students myself.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, that's right. I have two students myself who were directly told, do the Fitchburg State program, because then we'll hire you right straight from that program. And I, it seems to me like that, we should have something in place like that for teaching, given its relationship with, you know, it is one of our buildings, right? So maybe you could talk about something like that, because I know that that has been a wildly successful program. And it's smart, it just makes sense, right? Like, so you don't have to go to the academy, you're, it's all part of your deal, that you're in the academy and they're recruiting you right from there. So, I don't know, maybe we could translate that to education.
I would just like that. I think that's a really good idea. I think we should pursue that. But I would also, I'd question whether that's going to meet the expectations that we might have to meet, right? Like, I think the diversity of Fitchburg State's education department, like the students that are getting their bachelor's degree in education, I don't think you'd see that much of a difference from the whole state, right? Like, I don't know if that would really meet our problem. And then that said, right, what's our end goal? Is it to have our teaching staff, our entire staff, reflect the diversity of our student body? I don't know with the field, like, that's not just a Fitchburg problem, that's just like the field of educating is just.
Right. That's a statewide, that's a statewide challenge. And we're competing with every other school district in, I'll say, the state for a diverse pool. And one of the things in the, in the report, one of the findings was, we met with a nonprofit leader who met with our cabinet and some of our principals, who said that, you know, Fitchburg is not a desirable place, because, number one, the previous, you know, slide that I showed you, people know, and they want, you know, diverse candidates would like to work in a setting that is, number one, more diverse, but also, a lot of these candidates are, you know, tending to go to larger, more metropolitan areas, because there's more cultural opportunities there for them. So that's, it's a challenge, not just for Fitchburg, but I'll say for probably 80% of the communities in Massachusetts. And really, I think, communities are starting to recognize the need to try to grow your own pipeline, or create your own pipeline with whatever your local teaching college is. And I think the commissioner's trying to make it a little bit easier, well, easier isn't the right word, but to provide more pathways for people to go into and maybe stay in teaching. Because I think at a 100,000-foot level, not many, not, teaching is not as attractive as maybe going into business or engineering is for students these days. So I think, you know, demographically, the numbers for the state are challenging, if they don't start rebuilding and refilling that pipeline of teacher candidates.
Right.
I think it was Burlington, that superintendent was talking. They even created housing. I think they came up with three houses that they would provide for up to three years, so teachers could get acclimated to the area. And, I mean, that, but you take a place like Burlington, very, very wealthy, they can do those things.
Yes.
No, I think we should try everything. I just think as a community, we should just keep in mind of managing our own expectations, I guess.
And I will mention that the strategic plan that Fitchburg State is undergoing is not just Fitchburg State, it's required by the Department of Higher Ed. All the state universities are in that process, and they all are following the same guidelines. So it's a, I know they're looking for, as an alum, they're looking for alumni input as well. So it's, I think, anybody, opportunity. I think, going back to the comments about the commissioner, I think, I think the whole issue of standardized tests is an issue. I think the people who can pay for their child to have, how to take the SATs or the ACTs is the highest success rate. They know what to do. And I think it's probably similar here, that if you're well off, you can learn how to take a standardized test. And that's a big part of how well you do. I remember when, my wife Beth, when she was preparing to take her LSATs to be admitted to the bar, whatever teacher said to her, said, "Look at an old test. Look how it's laid out. Learn how it's laid out." So, and then, in terms of the content, you probably know most of that, but don't spend the time having to read every part. And it saves time to delving into the content of the question. I think for a lot of people, they don't have that luxury of being able to take a, whatever, three-week class to tell you how to do well in a standardized test.
Did you want to say something, John? So, returning to the theme of transitions, what I mentioned a little bit earlier, just kind of more in, I guess, a data format table, is, you know, over the last year, starting this school year versus the prior school year, we have six new principals in eight of our schools. And also, we have in seven of the eight schools, not only just new principals, but we have new leadership team members. And recognizing that, over the past year, all our school principals, I think, except for one who completed the Lynch Leadership Program, or two, actually, two, are participating in a leadership program to build their own leadership skills, capacity, but also focusing on urban educational leadership, and here, you know, in Fitchburg, and what's contemporary practices. And we're also providing individualized team capacity building at three schools, to, again, build capacity trust and focus on results. And, again, you know, one of the things that I discovered is, you know, a lot of our principals do spend time on, you know, disciplinary issues, and try to build staff capacity, so that time will decrease, so they can, you know, spend some more time on instructional leadership. That's, that's the, that's the goal and the challenge. So just talking about discipline, one of the things I looked at was, over the last three school years, 16, 17, 17, 18, and 18, 19, and in the report, I dropped the middle year, because I just wanted to, you know, look at, well, where did we start at over the last few years ago, and what progress have we made? And I looked at three subgroups or three groups. One was all students. The second group was students with disabilities, and the third was Hispanic Latino students. And both for in-school suspension and out-of-school suspension, the percentage of students has decreased in all those categories. There's been a, I guess, a revisiting of student discipline at the high school and middle school levels, and that both Jeremy and Craig have participated in in the past, and we're starting to see the results of that. So, you know, next couple, few slides, you know, talk about really the kind of the teaching and learning findings, and they're a little bit more detailed in the actual report, but I'll just try to kind of go through them at a high level. As we've gone around, as a leadership team, the cabinet has gone around and met with schools, whether they're in the bottom 10% or not, you know, discovered that the teachers, you know, are focused and are eager to participate in the student-centered solutions, and that teachers are expressing their voice in terms of what they see, and, you know, how they're being listened to. We just wrapped up a, I think, our last school visit last week at Rhinegold, and really, just being appreciative of the principal listening and central office being responsive to some of their requests and needs was good to hear, but also good to hear, you know, the work that they've been doing and taking the initiative to do.
Excuse me, could you speak up a little bit louder, please?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'll speak up or move the mic. You know, the expectations of our student learning across the district, and, you know, having walked through classrooms, both myself and the leadership team are inconsistent. Some teachers have very high expectations, and some don't have as high expectations. And that's something that our students, you know, are capable of the work. And that's kind of an area that we'll be looking at going forward. The curriculum offerings are not culturally relevant. You know, as our population has transitioned, you know, the curriculum materials that we've used haven't transitioned fast enough. And in many cases, because of the, I guess, the financial condition that we've been in, we haven't invested as much as we should have in curriculum, period.
Highlighted, there has been no formal curriculum review cycle in place to evaluate curriculum and content areas, determine priorities for future investment.
I started that too.
Huh?
So that's.
Why is that?
So, I.
I don't have an answer for it.
We don't have an answer on that. We can only say, I guess, as we go through, looking at where we're at, and again, with this Student Opportunity Act, and again, I don't want to, like, you know, give away the ending of the movie here, but that's an area that's ripe for investment.
Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And again, I just want to emphasize, too, that some, if not many, of these findings are consistent with what's happening in other districts. I'm not here to speak about other districts, but we all go to enough seminars, symposiums, conferences. And I'll just say, you know, from an urban perspective, we're in the same boat. So, again, without naming names, but, you know, and, you know, one example is, you know, the curriculum and teaching of subjects with fidelity, you know, science and civics at the elementary levels. That's, you know, that's not happening much here in Fitchburg, nor is it happening much at other urban districts across the state. The gaps in curriculum, math, that's one thing that, you know, was reported from our public consulting group audit, and we've taken actions to address that this year.
Could I just say, Bob, I mean, you have coaches, right? You have math and literacy coaches, but there are no, as I understand it, team chairs or department chairs or anybody who would be in a position to really do that work, right? So, in these other fields. So I really feel like that is a, I mean, not to say that, like, what we want is to spend money on more administrative costs necessarily, but there's a fair amount of administration that you really need, if you're going to try to keep everybody on the same page, or if you're going to keep school to school on a page. So I'm just kind of curious about your thoughts about that.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's more a matter of being, like, effective. So if we're talking about coaching, are we being effective with our coaches? Or if it's administrators or central office, are we being effective? And if there's gaps in terms of things not getting done, and actually, that's, you know, one of the things I'll talk about a little later, is, yeah, there are gaps. I mean, we're, as a district, we're very lean. Again, I say this in a comparing and contrasting mode, there are districts not far away from us that don't have coaches. So having coaches is a benefit for our teaching staff and for our students that, you know, other districts don't have. So other districts, over time, have had to make difficult choices. We made some, we don't have any curriculum directors at central office either, right now. So, some districts do. So, we made choices, and the coaching model and the coaching, the value of the coaching, I guess, was prioritized as being more effective over time. Could it be more effective? We're working on that. So the, you know, returning to kind of the human resources aspect, or our training, and going back to new teachers, we provide a mentoring program for just first-year teachers. You know, it's, it's, you know, I don't want to say it's bare bones, but a lot of teachers coming out of college don't necessarily have the classroom management and/or skills to handle social-emotional issues of our students these days. And that's, that's, I think, a common challenge with a lot of school districts in terms of what they're seeing. So regardless of if you're urban or suburban, you know, students' social-emotional needs is probably the number-one area that every school district is trying to do a better job of addressing. Again, some of this now is going back a little bit in time. Our standardized test results were either not accessible, communicated, or understood with the staff, which in some cases led to a lack of urgency, in terms of taking action, or even knowing if action was needed for, you know, teaching and learning. You know, looking at logistical obstacles to co-teaching, it's in regards to special education with regular education teachers, we're inconsistent in our application. And lastly, we don't have a systemic approach to social-emotional learning, or I should say, not yet.
Bob, I don't know if I'm jumping around here, but forgive me for a moment. Roland, this is probably for you. In addition, our special education rates continue to be higher than the state average at 24.2. What's the state average, roughly?
18%.
How much?
18.
18. Any reason for that? Why ours are higher? Are we better at reporting it and discovering it?
I think that there is a lack of really support as far as this for students at a more intervention level. So it gets to the point where students need to be identified to receive the supports that they need. You know, it's kind of what the team is looking at. How do we get those supports embedded into, you know, general and classroom support in some cases?
So how long does something like this take? If we're going to focus on that, to see it reduce from 24 to 20, 23, whatever, can you do that in a year? Probably not, right? Take several years?
That's coupled with, our students are faced with many challenges as well, with economic disadvantage, high needs, you know, second language learning, all of these things can layer and make it difficult for students to access the curriculum.
Okay. Thank you.
The churn rate.
Churn, that, yeah.
Eva, do you keep records of kids coming in with IEPs and the ones leaving? I know I've been in the office a lot of times where I've seen three, four, or five kids come in, and they'll all have an IEP.
So I think, while just moving on.
Okay, yeah.
So, English-language learners, you know, one of the things, and, you know, put in bold emphasis, really, this is, you know, our L students have, I think, moved from being a subgroup to an important part of our student population. And this year, we've begun to adapt to our academic, social, emotional approach to meet their needs. You know, I think one of the areas where some students, some L students, maybe, and we've spoken about this a little bit internally, may be incorrectly identified as special education students. That's not necessarily a special education issue. It may be in a language comprehension issue. So that's one thing that I think, going forward, our approach will probably be a little bit more holistic. But just returning to the findings, really, we didn't have an aligned curriculum for English language development. We've had, I'll say, a lack or inconsistent student progress oversight. And our instructional support of L teachers has been insufficient, although this year, we've kind of, I'll say, informally, but in recognizing what the need was this year, we had L teacher, call them teacher leaders, we deployed them to the areas where they're most needed, with Becky Mackey being the interim ELL director. She's moved some staff around, some to the Fitchburg High School and other schools, and, you know, become kind of personally involved with, you know, assessing where these schools are, their teaching staffs are, and also trying to get some more resources for these, for our L students. So that's been really one of the areas where we didn't perform that well in last year for MCAS, and, you know, the access testing, which is testing that ELL students need to take, are required to take. And, you know, we're kind of, again, you go back to the question of can, what can we expect in a year? I think we're putting in the systems and procedures, you know, with the L students this year. We hope to see some progress there. But future gains will come in, or more gains will come in future years, because we're almost implementing some actions, you know, midway into the year. in future years, because we're almost implementing some actions, you know, midway into the year. And, you know, lastly, just the, you know, the evidence base, the professional development for our L teachers has been lacking. And I think there's one quote in the report where a teacher said, you know, something to the effect that, "Thank you, I've never had this type of support before." So, we're focusing on this group. This has been an intentional area of focus. It's a large segment of our student population and one that can help us get out of, you know, the, I call it, the 10% threshold. But more than that, it's important that we educate these students because they are such a large part of our community and will be a large part of our community for years to So, you know, on the academic front, turning to Fitchburg High, and, you know, thematically, you know, access and equity and opportunity here, you know, we have been, our students have been, more students have been taking the SAT test at the high school, and also more Latino-Hispanic students have been taking the test along with students who are, you know, classified as economically disadvantaged. Last year, the number was down a little bit, but that was because we had a smaller class size. But if you look at the five-year trend in general, we're higher in 19 than we were in 15. You know, we've had some support from Mass Insight to help pay for the tests. We make time during the school day for students to take the test. So, again, this is an area where providing students access to the test is at least opening a door of opportunity for them as they consider their post-graduation plans. Delving down a little bit into the data, again, I, for the subgroups, I really just focused on the, number one, all the students at Fitchburg High, and then the Latino, Hispanic, and economically disadvantaged in the math and the reading and writing component of the SAT, compared them to state averages for those subgroups, and also compared, you know, the Hispanic and AICODIS subgroups of students to all students, you know, what the averages were. And even though we have more students taking the test, there's kind of a, just a consistent gap that exists between the subgroups and, say, either all students and the state averages. And again, just for, you know, full disclosure, kind of the scores at the state level and the school in Fitchburg have been kind of flat over the last few years. AP tests has been another area where the high school has done really a great job in terms of providing more access to students. Looking back a little bit further in time, going back to 2012, we had a total of 135 tests taken by students. And again, we tried to break out the subgroups of students who took those tests. And last year, that number had increased to 523%, so almost a 300% increase over seven years. You know, another metric to look at is, in addition to tests taken, is the qualifying scores. Qualifying scores did increase from 28 in 2012 to 116. The percentage of the qualifying scores, and that's a score of three, four, or five, which in Massachusetts, some state colleges give advanced standing for it, some don't. It all depends on the college in some cases. But again, you know, there is, the qualifying scores, the numbers have grown, the percentage increased from 21 to 22% during that time period. The African-American group, the qualifying scores increased, but the Latino and multirace categories decreased a little bit on those fronts.
Could you just talk about that a little bit? A couple of years ago, when the state, it was like a state audit, I guess, and they were interviewing school committee members and all different stakeholder groups, I remember the question on this, because when you look at the growth of tests taken, it's just an unbelievable success story. I mean, it's incre...and really, and I remember the question was, "Yet, your qualifying scores are so low, and does that bother you as a school committee member?" And I think the thought process there, right, was that first, we've got to convince kids that they can do this, right? You've got to get them into these classes, and you've got to get them doing this work. But I wonder, like, what the goal is here? And, you know, there's just, it's like Fitchburg exists in so many different worlds, right? So, you've got this world of AP and SATs, and like, some groups care about that, right? And other groups, you'd think, well, you know, you can go to test-optional schools, you don't really need all this stuff. But what is our goal? Because we are doing a lot of it. And just, I can think, like, I know when it came to like the physics test, there are a lot of kids taking the AP physics, and again, I think it's great, but they haven't had the math to necessarily be successful on the AP physics test. Like, so they're, like, they're doing it because, and I think, I'm happy with the larger goal being, like, we want you to see what this kind of work is, what this caliber of, or what this expectation is. Like, I'd be thrilled if that's what we say, that's our goal, and I don't care about qualifying tests, qualifying scores. But I'm just kind of curious about what you are all thinking about it, because we make a big investment in AP and SAT.
So, I guess I'll start, and I'll ask Jeremy to maybe just, if he's...
Comes at a forefront.
Comes at a forefront, yeah. Mark is still in the background here, but I think, you know, the first step was really providing the access and the opportunity for our students to take this test and to...
Are we still in the first step?
I think we're moving beyond the first step, but I guess I'll pass the ball to Jeremy here, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think that it's a valid question. You know, do you have, as a school or school system, and an urban one at that, you know, a program that has a lot of different criteria to enter into an AP-type course or not? And for us, you know, we looked at some of our information back in 2012 and just decided that what we were doing, what was happening, not what we were doing, I think so much as what was happening, was just so few students were accessing the opportunity. They didn't know about it, they didn't believe they could do it. There were criteria in the sort of process that required a student to do two or three things before they could sign up for an AP-type class. So, we removed a lot of that. After, you know, researching it and talking to outside partners that certainly knew a lot about it, and definitely looking at, you know, the factors related to urban high schools, there is huge benefit to a student taking an AP class, whether they pass it or not. There's evidence that has been done and conducted in various research studies. WPI Research has actually conducted one that shows that even a student with a one, which is the lowest score on a five-point scale, is going to be more likely to have some success in that freshman year of college than someone who's never taken one at all. We've had many years where, and College Board considers a two is almost qualified, and we've had years where we had like the fifth, sixth highest amount of twos in the state of any school, which to me is also indicative of a lot of times of what we see with other results. We have kids who are not quite ready, they're maybe a year or two behind their intelligence level, their, you know, capacity potential, all that stuff is unbelievable, but they're not exactly in the same place as someone else yet, especially from a suburban area, especially who's had some different advantages or situations, like my own kids, for example. So, I take, you know, to your point, Gene, I think we take a lot of pride in those twos because I've talked to many of our post-grads who have said, you know, "My classes are so easy," thankfully, because I took those AP classes. Those were tougher.
Okay.
I didn't pass the test. I've heard that 50 times at least, probably in the last year or two. Never mind going back, you know, over and over again, at football games, at basketball games, where you run into a kid, ask him, "How you doing? What's going on at college?", this kind of thing. To your point, we have to diversify, which is why we're looking at manufacturing and other things. And our goal is 40% qualifying score rate. You know, that's pretty typical, I think, for urban high schools. That's our SMART goal. The teachers work hard on it. We do see some pockets where the enrollments will adjust. You know, you look at AP Physics 1, that's a teacher thing. He's a great teacher, the kids love him, you know, so all of a sudden, you have 88 enrollments in year two, you know, which is probably not realistic. It's a super challenging tech course where your math background is extremely important. So, that will adjust back into the 40s. You know, we'll see that happen, I think. But again, I think, you know, as we look at it, to your point, I beat myself up about it too, when you see, "Oh, man, why didn't we get 200 qualifying scores like we had set for a goal?". But then, you know, looking at the larger picture of access to students and building and instilling that belief that you can go to college, you can do this. This is a fight that we have all the time, and these types of courses, I think, just crack the door open just a little bit.
Well, I don't know, I won't speak for others, but like I said, I'm happy if that's what our goal is, because I think it's an important one. But I was just kind of curious if, you know, I didn't know that you have this SMART goal of like a 40% qualifying score. I mean, that's, that would be incredible, but I'm not saying that I think we're only successful if we see that. I just was curious because I remember that question, I don't know if you guys remember that question from the state. Are we, as school committee members, happy with that?
Yeah, they asked me the same thing, I think. I remember that was the CPR from a couple of years ago, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. You know, and I gave much the same response, and have had this conversation with other urban principals too, you know, struggle with the, do you put in, impediments is the wrong word, but more rigorous criteria? And that'll lower your number of tests, probably back down into the 300s at this point, because it's a well-established part of the school. And the qualifying score percentage will go up then. I mean, it just will. You know, it'll go to probably 50% or 45% or something like that. But I do think there's value for many of the kids who earn a two, who weren't even a one, but get a C or better in the class, and they're just better prepared. I mean, that's a curriculum, talk about curriculum, you must follow it. You sign, I sign these documents, we agree to provide these materials, and follow this college curriculum from day one to day 160 about, or 155 is when the tests are. And, you know, there's some comparable dual enrollment and international baccalaureate-type curriculum, but that's about as rigorous as it gets in high schools.
Okay. Thanks.
And I think although it's not necessarily in tonight's presentation, but, you know, when Jeremy was here last month at school committee about early college as well, you know, it's about providing our students that access and opportunity. So, if they have the opportunity to take, you know, courses through the Mount or Fitchburg State and get a semester under their belts...
Yeah, that's great.
Their likelihood of obtaining a bachelor's degree increases phenomenally. And, you know, there's state data from, I think it was Idaho, North Carolina, Texas...
Texas, for sure.
Where they've proven that providing more access transitions into success. So, you know, maybe going back to, maybe it's similar, maybe it's not, but, you know, in terms of being a teacher passing the MTEL, does it mean that they're not effective teachers or they just can't pass a test? So, with high school students, just because they don't get the three, four, or five, they've been exposed to that rigor in that when they do enroll in college, they're better prepared and ready. And to hear comments like, "Well, jeez, college is easier compared to what I had to, you know, deal with in high school in my AP classes." So, you know...
Okay, thanks.
While they didn't get the credit and get the course waived, they're better prepared to be successful.
I'd just like to make a comment after, I'm so impressed with this report and the rigor of the data and so forth, but I just want to say, like, this section about the AP successes and expansion and incursion into subgroups and all of that is such a hopeful sign, because you've got a culture up there at the high school, and I know this because I have my son a junior, there's real rigor. The students are feeling it. And I think where every student knows what AP is, I know that at my high school, I mean, a few of us knew what AP was and not everyone, but everyone knows, because you've made a culture, you and your team have made a culture where this is an option. Why not try it? And the, I guess, the challenge there to, in that, you know, mid to late adolescence to do something as hardcore as an AP test, that's pretty impressive. And I can hear, I hear students who are impressed that they're doing it, impressed that people they know are doing it, and, you know, with the team, you know, the team feeling that this is throughout the high school, that's been transformational, because I've spent a few years on this school committee, and I remember AP coming in and you're discussing it as, "We need to bring this forward, and we need to make this available, and we need to support our students." And look where we are. This is phenomenal. I'm really impressed. Thank you.
If I could just add, I mean, it takes the entire effort of the district, so...
Absolutely.
To your point, you know, everybody here has contributed to this. And, you know, we received a phone call last year from researchers at the University of Illinois, and they were trying to fund a study that they wanted to do with various schools across the nation who had closed the access and equity gap with AP. And when I spoke to them, now, they never got funded, but they said they were going to keep trying to get this funding, we had the 11th highest growth in the entire United States of, you know, of all, I think they were going to study about 50 schools across the country, and we were 11th, according to the person I spoke to from the University of Illinois, which made me feel really, you know, I think all of us should take pride in that, you know? And the numbers that we had before were not acceptable to the kids that we served, to the community we serve, and now they are. Now, it's a matter of, you know, just increasing the performance and trying to figure those things out.
Thank you.
Okay, back to the background. Mr. Pierce.
Oh, actually, well, maybe not yet, but, so, again, so while Jeremy's here, so the graduation rate, again, over the last, all this is 10 years, has increased from just under 76% to about, we're at 86% I think in 2018. The 2019 information is still embargoed, so we can't share that information with you yet. We wish we could. We'll just leave it on that note. How's that? And then, you know, just, I think this is probably the last slide on high school, post-graduation plans, which we talked about a little bit with the student support subcommittee. And really, you know, again, this is 2018 data, 2019 data wasn't available yet. A lot of our students, the majority, go to two-year or four-year public colleges, the two-year being Matwachuset, but our percentage of students going into the workforce is almost double what the state average is. And Jeremy has been really proactive about providing as many career pathways as possible. We happened to have met with Desi last Thursday, it was, for a Ford grant, and at the end of the meeting, they were saying, with, again, I can't name other districts, but let's just say, they're much larger urban districts that could learn a lot from Fitchburg's creativity and resiliency and what we're doing to try to provide our students opportunities, you know, for those who are going into a career workforce environment. Yeah, they were, I think, very impressed. It's probably an understatement.
It was a positive meeting.
Yeah, very positive. So, yeah, so, okay, we're all set at high school, yeah. Now, you can just direct your questions at Craig here as we start talking about net school spending. But really, you know, the long and short of it is, you know, the city has a history of meeting the net school spending or foundation budget or maintenance spending, whatever term people are comfortable or used to with. And this really just shows how that budget has grown over time since 93. And really, this year's net school spending is projected to be 80 million dollars. So, with that as a segue or a transition, you know, the Student Opportunity Gap is, or ACT, not GAP, it's meant to address the gaps, is really a once-in-a-generational event, I'll say, at least in Massachusetts in terms of education funding formula. The last time it was done, reviewed, was in 90s, and it was long overdue. And if any of you remember, I think it was last January or February, we held an event over at Fitchburg State, and where, I think, there were 12 different communities ranging from large urban to small urban to regional and rural districts, held a forum to talk about the importance of... of revisiting the formula. You know, as I mentioned earlier, and to the Student Support Subcommittee, the Student Opportunity Act, the primary goal is to narrow the achievement and opportunity gaps to, to students primarily living in urban districts that have a larger percentage of English language learners, economically disadvantaged students, and students with a higher incidence of special education needs. So we are, you know, one of the group of 35 schools who, who are targeted, you know, for that additional support. And now, once we receive that support, and actually, we'll, I'll talk about some of the details a little bit later here, but we basically have to put together a plan by April 1, and we just received some more information today that'll describe how funds can be used. The research-based items that aren't in bold upon the screen were ones that were originally released by DESI as guidance for districts for what they should be considering. So I'll just kind of go through them quickly. And, and, you know, some of them we are looking at, and actually, we went through a exercise this morning with the principals to kind of rank order these. I don't have the, the poll results with me, but I can tell you which ones were, were more heavily weighed in terms of a high priority. So, one item was expanding the learning time in the form of a longer school day or school year. And I'll just say the administrators viewed that as a potential priority. Increased opportunity for common planning time for teachers, that's another thing we'll be looking at. Social services to support students' social, emotional, and physical health, this was, I will say, the consensus number one priority. Of the principals, there was no need for calibration there. This, I think, either ranked a nine or a 10 on the rating of, you know, priorities, 10 being the highest. Hiring school personnel that best support improved student performance, again, we're looking at, you know, what we have and how that could be supplemented. Increased or improved professional development, again, with staff turnover, we hire about 50 staff a year. Either staff move on or move into other positions. We really have to look about, look at having a kind of a sustained level of professional development, but also one that's extremely high quality. And, you know, the last summer, we met with John Saffier, both Fitchburg and Leinster's leadership teams, held a, I think, was it a one-day seminar? Was it two? I can't remember if it was one or two days. It was two days, yeah. And really looking at bringing kind of best-in-class professional development to our teaching staff. And, you know, and then the, the challenge will be to kind of sustain that every year, because the training needs don't go away, even if we, you know, did a surge over the next year or two. As we talked earlier, you know, the, well, purchasing curriculum materials and equipment that are not only aligned to the statewide curriculum frameworks, but also, you know, as we talked about earlier, being culturally relevant. You know, we talked earlier about diversifying the educator and administrator workforce. And we just talked about the pathways to strengthen college and career readiness, which I think really we're on probably the leading edge of, you know, school districts in the state on that front. So, just, we're in kind of the, the home stretch here of the, of the presentation. But really, this facility summary is one that I used to put together as part of the budget, and really just when our, when our schools was built, the average age, you know, several, now four years ago, Lamor Pagano, an architectural firm out of Worcester, rated our buildings. And back in 2016, also, the MSBA did a rating of not only the buildings in Fitchburg, but across the state. This table's really just updated, you know, because a year has transpired. So that's, you know, our facilities have an average lifespan of about 62 years. The newest one is, you know, the high school, and the, and the rest are, you know, 50, you know, 60-plus years or older. So, really, kind of in conclusion, you know, what are, what are the strengths of the district? You know, we are evolving from a, a district of schools to a school district with more common systems and cultures focused on improvement in student outcomes. I think we've made tremendous progress over the last year, or, and towards that. You know, we're, we're on that journey every day, and we continue to work on that. Second strength, really collaborative relationship with, with all our stakeholders, where we share in the creation and ownership of goals. You know, our collaboration with the FEA in terms of, you know, the calendar, adjustments that we made last year. I think across the board, all our schools are experiencing a lower rate of student absenteeism. So having less half-days for professional development is having an impact. And, you know, we have had the union leadership, their executive board, talk with us a few times throughout the year of, of matters of mutual interest. And lastly, I really can't go without saying that, you know, the district leadership team and staff, you know, we, we continue to show resiliency and creativity and responsiveness. So whether it's at the elementary school level, or at, you know, the high school or central office, we're always trying to, you know, find out what the needs are of our students and trying to, you know, see if there are any problems and what we can do to solve them. So, the opportunities, and this is my, we're going to sound a little bit like a broken record. Student Opportunity Act really kind of says it all about improving access equity and opportunity for our students. Actually, this afternoon, they amended the list from 10 items to 17 items. We just kind of briefly talked about the expanded list of 17 items today, so this, these items haven't been updated. But we've had discussions as a team in terms of what the priorities are, and what our students' needs are, and are now going to start to put together a plan that we'll be sharing with you by April 1. So, over the next couple of months, as part of the Student Opportunity Act, DESI, part of their, I guess, the requirement is that we get input from community stakeholder groups, special ed, parent advisory councils, the ELL, Parent Advisory Council, the union, Teachers Union. I know, you know, the MTA has, I guess, or will be giving them a sample survey for them to complete about priorities. And we've been in, you know, regular contact with them, talking about where we're at and what our needs are. So we'll be continuing to have additional conversations with them. Again, April 1 is the submit date. At some point, we'll be getting back to, I don't know if we need to either add or move a school committee date to make sure that the, the vote maybe occurs close to the April 1 date as possible. And it all depends on how much progress we're making on that, if we need more time, or we'll just have to condense it. One of the things I had thought originally was that we had to have the whole budget complete by then, which, you know, in some respect, we do, but the only thing that the school committee has to approve on is really a portion of that Student Opportunity Act money. And let's just say roughly, it's about a little over $2 million, I think there was a dollar amount that actually is in that, of that increase. So the school committee has to approve how we're going to invest that $2 million into improvement student outcomes. Going back to a question that, you know, the mayor raised about, you know, you know, specifically about special education, but it's really kind of just core instruction and, you know, meeting, you know, creating a tiered system of support, is, I'll call it the educational language for students academically and socially, social, emotional. Having good, solid tier-one instruction is, is our goal. And we've, I guess, begun that journey as well by trying to reallocate some staff, some teacher leaders on the ELL front this year. And now with the additional resources, you know, how best to do that going forward. And, you know, lastly, over the remainder of this year, and looking ahead to future years, how we can kind of maybe put some of the, the actions that we'll be taking into more of a strategic format, you know, that'll hopefully be sustainable over time. You know, I think, you know, with the Student Opportunity Act, I don't want to say there are no guarantees on funding, but we never know. You know, we do rely on our funding from Chapter 70 for about 75% of the budget. So, some level, we're tethered to the state. But regardless, we need to have some goals and some priorities. And we, you know, and using professional development, or, as an example, or, you know, training new teachers, that we can't, we can't let up on that, we can't take our foot off the gas on that. So, lastly, I'll, I'll end with our moral imperative words that, I have to give that phrase credit to Adam Renda for when I first started, or actually when we're interviewing Adam. He kept saying that in his interview, but really, it's why we're all here. And to borrow a line from Hamilton, you know, when Hamilton's wife sings after Hamilton has passed, is, you know, when, when my time is up, have I done enough? And will they tell your story? And it's really, when our time is up here collectively as school leadership or the school committee, and we look back, have we, have we done all that we could to provide access, equity, and opportunity to our students? So, on that note.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I guess, any other questions, comments?
Please, Bob.
I, I, I shared, any applause with the people to my right and, and behind me, who, who put up with several edits, changes in directions. It was probably as stressful on them as it was for anybody else. So.
That one slide you had, you said it doesn't reflect the new revisions that DESI provided. Now, there's 17 categories.
Yes, yes.
And is it possible that that could even change again? Or?
I don't think so.
No.
So that, yeah, it's released, the, the original listing of 10, they shared it with, I guess, state-level stakeholders. I know the Mass Superintendents Association had an opportunity to provide their feedback. I'm sure they, you know, received feedback from, you know, the MTA and others. And, you know, what we have now, I think, is, is the final listing of evidence-based options. We actually have a conference call scheduled for this Friday, where we'll find out some more information on that. I guess, unlike other grants, or maybe historically, the grant process at DESI, gone are the days of lengthy applications and lengthy school turnaround plans, school improvement plans. I think if it's under $1.5 million, you have a.
Short form.
I don't even know how long the short form is, because it doesn't apply to us. But the long form is five pages, right? So if the long form is five pages, I'm sure we can be succinct for that. So, but that, but I think, you know, and last week, when we were down at DESI for this Innovation Career Pathways Grant, not only do they not have time, I don't say require the, the lengthy grant application, they, I think, recognize that we don't have the time to write it, nor do they have the time to really read it.
Yeah.
I'm not speaking for them, but.
No.
This is unrelated, I guess, to all that, but the 21st Century program, is that grant money still looking like it's going to be an option for us in all the schools that we have it?
As of now, yes. We have a couple of schools that are up for renewal. And then, I think the plan is to actually apply for McKay for next year.
Okay.
So.
So that's a lot of our schools that have that program, and that's got to be unique? I mean, is that true for a lot of the districts like us, or?
I'm not quite sure if it's unique. It may be, but.
I, I thought a couple of years ago, people were really worried we were going to lose that funding in a lot of schools, but.
They talked about it, I think.
Yeah.
That's federal money, correct?
No, that's, I think that's state money.
State money.
That's state money.
But no, the grant's still strong.
Okay.
Approval for a school last year, I think Memorial started last year, correct? And then this year, the plan is to, for next coming year, to apply for McKay.
Okay.
So we'll have it up in the majority of our schools.
And what about the Extended Learning Grant at Long Island? Is that still viable? That's still?
I believe so. They've seen no indication that that's being cut.
Okay.
Yeah. And usually on that one, Gene, just from past experience, any information on that usually doesn't come out till the state's budget session nears, like the Senate, you know, version where the revenue picture gets a little bit more concrete from the state, and whether they, you know, decide they're going to tweak it. And sometimes with ELT too, some schools voluntary pull out. So even if there's an issue at the state, if one school pulls out, their money gets, you know, it's still in the, in the state budget, so it gets reallocated to the, to the schools that are still in the program. So.
Okay. I'm just thinking big things that would, could impact the budget.
Yeah, that's still, that's still the case.
Could we, could we use some of the opportunity money to, to the after-school programs, maybe at all the schools?
Well, it's, I can remember if that is an option.
Enrichment activities.
Enrichment, yeah, so extracurriculars.
Extracurricular athletics.
21st Century's got a 300-plus waiting list?
Yeah, so this year, what we did was, we went to, part of the grant kind of requires, because of our economic situation of our students in Fitchburg, required, this year it required us to not charge a fee for students to participate. So this year, because we didn't charge a fee.
It expanded.
Expanded, everyone applied to participate. So the wait lists increased significantly at all our schools this year.
But we couldn't accommodate them anyway, right? Or could we?
It would be tough to. I think, you know, we rely on a lot of our teachers to stay after.
Right.
To run those after-school programs. And I think it would be very difficult to get, you know, the majority of our staff to, to stay later because of their own home circumstances that they have to worry about. You know, and one thing that, I guess, one area that didn't really, I don't say make it into the report, or we didn't have a chance to really do a full, comprehensive review, was, we started looking at our extracurricular programming. And again, as you see, you know, the demand is more than we're, we're meeting. But also, you know, we're looking at, you know, the athletic programs, and, and again, looking at, you know, how effective they are, and do we expand to more students to meet more student needs? So, that's, that in and of itself is, you know, a multi-month process as well. So, we've, we've started that, and I'm sure we'll be continuing that, that review.
I know. And I'm just going to speak now in the school committee, but as a Crockerfield committee member. One of the things we'd like at Crockerfield is to get an all-purpose field there, because now, what we're doing, we've got the field to where maybe, we're going to be able to use Crockerfield maybe into the middle of October. The athletic director is planning to have every team play at least one game at Crockerfield. Right now, we use Crockerfield for roughly five football games during the year. The JVs don't play on it, the freshmen don't play on it. If we had an all-weather field, we would be able to use it six days a week with no problem. And every team would be able to play multiple games there. Girls' field hockey, and lacrosse, and girls and boys soccer. That's well into discussion. But in fact, we talked about it today, Peter.
Oh, yeah.
You'll be involved in the next one.
Okay.
I think you were on vacation.
I was on vacation, I wasn't around.
I said, I was wondering why he wasn't at the first two meetings. I said, where's Stevens? He's out sunning himself, and, you know.
Sunny Florida.
There you go, that's right. Good for you. All right, okay.
Okay, end of my speech here. Any more questions for Bob?
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And they've all cleared out. And thank Chad too, for putting on his editor hat as well. He.
Thank you, Mr. Chad.
Chad brought it home for us, so.
So you, you going to continue with budget items?
Yep, we've got two donations to be approved, both for Fitchburg High School.
Yep.
One for $784.10 from Life Touch, and that's to be used for Mr. Roach's student activity account. And one from Alliance Energy, and that's for $500. And again, that's to be used for a variety of school activities, and included in the principal's account. Those are the only two donations we have this evening.
Okay.
We have one grant to accept for $23,354, and that's, was a competitive grant, and We have one grant to accept for $23,354, and that's, was a competitive grant, and it is targeting civics teaching. We also have three items up for approval for submitting statement of interests for the MSBA accelerated repair programs, and I believe the language for the votes are here in your packets. The first one is for Goodrich Academy for roof. The second will be for Fitchburg High School roof, and the third one is for the Long Joe Middle School for windows and boilers, and we have put the Long Joe repairs in as our priority project for next year.
Then, right? Can we bundle these?
Yep. We have some line item transfers for your approval, and again, those are included in your packet. And then finally, the approval of the warrant for 1.85 that was submitted from the superintendent.
Right. These, these three statements of interest went before council finance, and will be on the agenda tomorrow evening's council meeting, and I believe it was unanimous, was it? The committee?
Yeah.
I think we'll anticipate the same tomorrow night. So, there's desire, bundle these 20-1266 up through and including 20-1273.
Make a motion, revundle.
Second. You made to bundle, all in favor?
All in.
Opposed? They are before you, 20-1266 up through and including 20-1273.
Do you approve them?
Second.
Motion made, second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made, second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.